June 20th. Everybody is here.
First day of summer.
First day of summer. Coming up on the longest, latest sunrise. What is it, the couple days?
Today's the latest sunrise.
I don't think today's the latest, it is the longest day. I think the latest sunrise takes another couple days. Ironically, that was our first one. Calendar, correspondence.
Calendar, this week we have, today we have a transit meeting at 1:00. And then tomorrow at 11:00, that's a complete session. And then 1:30, we have the board health meeting. And that's about it for the calendar.
Bill, do you attend the force chamber of commerce luncheons? Okay, on Wednesday, I'm going to be speaking as the speaker for the force chamber of commerce. And so it sounds like commission of future dialysis will be at that lunch.
You're gonna should attend.
That's right.
Here's my talk review.
Who knows?
I trust you. Anything else this week?
Chairman, we'd like to ask you to get a head count how many you were attending the board health meeting. That's the bridge calendar. Correspondence came in. State of Washington office of management sent in a G A letter. Supporting documents for the population estimates. Up here legal first one of 2016. Everyone received a copy of that. Everyone was invited to the school legislature opening ceremonies on July 15th. At 11:00 in the morning. There was, you know, it came out for the ferry advisory meeting. We also had a letter come in for Donna Clark at D C D. And everyone was provided with a copy for the closed patient rental regulations.
Well, we can talk a little bit about the ferry advisory committee?
Certainly can, as part of correspondence, I'd say that all came up at the last Thursday or Friday. And we all saw my responses back and their response back. Really what are the commissioners want to do? I, I, there does seem to appear to be a loophole still in the way the R C W is written. But, and it turns out Trish remembered that before I got here, that there was a real struggle to new people on said committees. And trying to get new people willing to go down, particularly after the week, apparently after we lost the Washington state ferry terminal here. Didn't seem to be much value, so I don't know. But the law does say we're supposed to have one, but it also says we're supposed to appoint folks in the vicinity of the terminal. So I bet my.
But I don't have any real strong feelings about it one way or the other. I just, I personally don't have a very desire to, to serve on that committee. I'm not sure what it would have for residents of the county.
Yeah, we ended it one time ago. Last representative, I actually said it's representative of Warren, Susan Kieske, the Edward News representative. He was, he was the last, basically, as we've been. So much of the issues that happened there happened at P R Q P O.
Right.
And so he just kind of, you know, Tommy just could find anybody else. So unless, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see. It's a lot to ask somebody, it just hasn't been any interest. But I think the work at the F T B over there covers a lot of the fair issues. Seeing unanimity, perhaps I, I could forward or send a response back to the chair who suggested that since the, the Washington state area system itself is working on revising the R T W. Send an email, wait, please take us out.
Wait and see what it looks like.
Yeah, yeah. Because we don't have a terminal. Sounds fine to me.
Okay.
I think that they, because there's a vote taken, this fall about taxes for the fair, that it's a local capital. And it's not anything to do with us, but that's creating some awareness, creating some raised awareness. I tried to research, one and while we had this thing on the road, and that's the only thing that came out.
Anything else on calendar correspondence? Close interlocal procurement agreement of the city of Amber Island. Alice is here, good morning.
This is, this is the manager, interlocal, see, I mentioned online, to allow each agency to utilize the other agency's contract for purchase.
Is this an agreement we have with a lot of the business companies or something special about Amber?
No, this is part of the settlement we've done.
And we have another department, same commissioners, probably done 30 already sometime now. So they'll come with a tool to work under somebody else's bidding process to show the way it is.
And before we utilize the Amber Island or Amber City, City of Seattle is one of the ones that they utilize because they have some contract. But before we do purchase off their contract, then we get all of the backup documentation from them, a copy of their contracts, make sure they went out to bid. City of Seattle's, you can grab all that stuff right off of their website, so it works out a lot.
Great. Is there any file item for next week? Thank you. Next is a notice of call for hearing of a proposed surplus property sheriff's office of October 2, 40 caliber. Is somebody with a Hoover?
This is Todd Morris. So it's another process we need to revise if we can purchase it.
Great. Questions? Or correctly, so the union can purchase it, or is it?
For Todd, yes. The union will either buy the shadow box or the weapon. And the agency chose to have them out of there.
Anything else to add, Sheriff, from the surplus of the firearm? Oh, no, no, I, her backup, whatever she said. I drove a car. We've done this with the one Alex, if you guys still remember, right? We went through, and the sheriff put together a policy a couple of, three, four, five years ago now.
Yeah, this is, we did look at making the bid and make sure they get a fair price for it. We get reprisals and over to all the procedures.
I would add that, that in general, these weapons have been with the officer for at least 10 years or more. And we would retire them anyway. We usually give a brand new firearm to a new police officer. Our experiment facility is notice of call for, call for bids for the common county 3th Street building, probably two remodel.
We are now, where we are ready, obviously, call for bids for the remodel of the upper floor of the 3rd Street building. And just a quick background, this will be, the remodel is going to allow the remainder, or virtually the rest of the remainder of the health insurance department to relocate to the 3rd Street building above the existing town department. It's approved in our 2016 budget for this year. And we are, it's, it's actually the beginning of the phase one of a much, much larger project. Once H H S has moved over there, there are a couple of large scale, those are going to happen here for our department, prosecutor's department. Or portion of the prosecutor's office. So time is of the essence of this one, on this one. Ask for your group.
So when we finish, how many of the human services department will be over there?
Everybody will be over there with the exception of folks across the hall.
And their proximity determinance is really useful to me.
I think, right. It didn't make sense to relocate them.
How many do you get, Seattle?
Well, I'm hoping to get more than we've gotten recently. Getting interested bidders has been a bit difficult.
Yeah.
Everybody's busy. And prices, interesting coming in too, are a bundle. I would love to see three or four at least, but I'm, I can't, I can't help it. But we're gonna, we're gonna notify everybody if we can.
Hit up. File for next week? And a notice of call for bids for territorial services for the following.
We have, this is the third call for bids for the health department. Since we acquired the 3rd Street building, the health department hasn't been cleaned by a janitor staff that's having contracted cleaning workers to do that. And this year's contract expires July the 18th, so we can do everything. In order for that transition, if there's a new, if there's a new bidder, or if there's a new contractor selected, so we have plenty of time to do that.
Are we gonna look and see how to bid if it's, is it all done, just for now, or is that?
Well, I'm actually working on that. It's probably going to be a discussion we're gonna have in the budget process. Because once the upper floor is completed, we already have a whole other area that we're gonna have to either contract out or consider an additional person. And probably all of you have heard that we, you've probably heard complaints from time to time of that condition of the facility. We've got two guys that are taking care of all this stuff. So it's very difficult. We just lost one of them. And we've been using backups for two, three months now, so we're, we're kind of hurting in that department. So it's, it's gonna be on the proposal list for the budget for 2017.
How high's been their contract price?
Um, the last year, or the current one, well, actually, the current one was far less than the first one. Let's see, it's about $9,000 a year, nine to 10,000. But that, that, that's really low based on the first one. The first one was about, I think it was about 20 to 21. It was considerably less than the current contract we have, for whatever reason. But she's done a really good job. Difficult on the road, but you have to get close back online, but overall, it's satisfying. Certainly, it's a big conversation to have a budget now. We're taking one of the numbers now, to see how they're doing.
File for next week? Public works of proposed special use permit of United States Forest Service for construction, maintenance, operation of section seven of the U P N Forest Service land.
This is the project that we talked to you about last week, about the order. We call it the bids board. This is a permit for the use of the forest service. And I've shown, highlighted that on a two mile long project, there's about maybe half of it that's in forest service. So we have the permit back from forest service, ready for commissioners to sign. So we have to do without the second act there. With that, construction started this summer, we will have the trail, I think, the west one to that 2918. About how we're going to sign the highway.
So, cool. And this is, this is a permit that expires in 2020. This is a normal process we've been through before with forest service. The, the permanent one takes a lot longer to get. They'll issue this one, give us new construction. We have to make sure they were on the, don't lose it on the calendar, it's 2020 month ago. But everything's worked out okay with them, so it's not a problem.
Questions on that?
So after that segment, can you connect to the 2918?
Yep. I run down the side of the 2918 southward until we get to the 7 hour range.
Is that part of extended extension?
Yes.
Yeah.
That goes all the way out to Merritt Clark.
Yeah, it's completed from the 2918 westward to the Cooperant Row.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That's what we call segments two to five.
So after the segment that you have here, the next big segment we have is potentially that parcel through Rainier.
Um, yes.
Do you have anything to do with that? Kind of the Rainier property, like forest service or you would? You made it to Merritt Clark.
Right, and Merritt Clark is used as part of the trail. A section there, I don't know what that is, to give it to the.
Okay. Any other questions? Second last, is there, is there okay a way to leave, sign this, is there any rush? So we'll go to sign this next week. Any other questions? Community development, others personal services agreement. The Shannon and Gilson for engineering design services, we'll design a base for lower end of this, plant restoration.
This is our agreement with the consulting firm that was chosen to do the engineering design. For the levy setback and collecting research. And there are a lot of moving pieces to that project, as you know. But we've worked this issue with consulting firm and our lending partners to craft a contract bill. And it's where we need to go to this construction.
Notice we don't have an intended item summary for this, but it's. Didn't make it into our, didn't make it into our. Just going to presume because of the way the David Klein vice president signed it as of the 28th of June. It's no problem for us to wait and sign it also on the 28th.
Correct.
Any questions?
Can you briefly take us through the timeline, or the ideal timeline over the next couple of years? How this gets in with the next phase?
Sure. We will this summer do our kickoff readings and start the design from where we are now, the industry, the case. There are also some field tests that are planned for the next couple of months. Boardings around for both looking at the material and the levy, what's in the levy, can and can it be reused? Because that will factor in the construction costs. And also a certain amount of groundwater testing, see the, how the ground and water is moving in the area where the levy will go. And doing that, we'll be starting the early phases of thinking about trails, or construction and so forth. We move, so we move through 30% design. The core does not review until 65% design. So 30 will be kind of not as, you know, they won't have to do all the reports for the core at the 30% level. And then once everyone's comfortable at 30%, proceeds to 65, the core gets involved at that point. And it gets a little more even. Simultaneously, the county agreement, and that is the point at which the core steps in with some of their funding, or become the table worth funding. Which will be good, I think. And then we, we proceed on those lines up to what's called the 95% design. Then at that point, once everyone agrees, there, we move into 100% and we go to construction. And that process will take, every time, put a timeline, it's, but say a year, year and a half. And then we want to go on the construction after that, depending on our official setting, so. Does that make sense?
No, it does, thank you.
Now, one thing I'd like to bring up is that Town Road is integral, runs through this project. And we've discussed, and I don't know whether Commissioner Peaches, we've been here one full T I P cycle. So it may have come up to them, and Commissioner Elias has, have yet to go through the T I P cycle. But the concerns, public concerns about traffic safety on Town Road have been brought to our attention generally in these meetings where we're talking about. The levy setback, was the road should be through it, or cul-de-sac was the main question at those meetings. We have the southerly portion of Town Road on the tip for reconstruction for a number of years. That goes from Woodcock Road northward through to the Humpty Dumpty's and basically down onto the flat out there. That was the size of the project. Early on, for years, as we got deeper into this process and not knowing further of the road was gonna stay or go. I kind of had my staff pull, we kept moving, bumping the, that section of Town Road back on the tip. We just kept holding it back a little bit because there's obviously going to be an economy at stake. We have this big project going on here and a road project going on at the same time. So we're gonna put a revised description in the tip. And I believe we can be far enough along this process by the time we get to the tip process this year. You have definitively made the statement, we're going to go through and maintain continuity, or we're going to cul-de-sac. And we'll plan to do the design and construct of this whole thing at the same time. Good for efficiency, it minimizes the total disruption to the travel and public. And when we get done, we'll have a complete project. And a lot of the material that may come out of the, the cuts that need to be done to get the Humpty Dumpty's out of the southerly section may be actually useful too for construction in other places. So that's going to be queued up a little bit, some, some real timelines this year as we go through the tip. We'll see that on there as a timeline for construction that's going to mimic this projected timeline. So I'll hear you have something like that.
Okay.
I thought the schedule of community outreach, information meetings, I was just happy to see that laid out explicitly in the contract. And I think that helps, makes very good sense, too. Looks like a lot of work.
Yep.
Thank you.
What notice can be made on that, Maris? I thought the last time we took a look at this, we did see some people saying, I have concerns. And it looked like a lot of the concerns were quite easily addressed, just by sitting down and showing plans and sharing what is occurring. So I'm just kind of wondering, right now, do you have the situation where a lot of the local community or the local neighbors are saying, gee, questions could not be answered? I still need information.
My impression from the worker folks, which, which included the dairy and Nash on the bar door side and the, and the community. They've been actively at the table for the last decade. So we've heard their concerns and we've done many side iterations on, on transportation issues or transportation designs to mitigate their concerns. The ones that we hear specific to that southerly section of Town Road are primarily due to site distance and speed. And we've known that before. The, this thing ever was queued up as a project. So I've had this on my radar for more than a decade, that this project's been there. It just hasn't been done. Once this thing started to become, give some traction and start to run, it's like, well, let's do it all together, we're gonna do it. So I believe that the residents that live in that southerly section, or access that southerly section of Town Road. I'm not going to presume that their questions are answered, but they're, we should be able to answer their questions within the next few months as we go through the tip process. I would expect them to come forward to me and say, I really want this. Or we'll make sure that when we have these meetings that are identified here, that they are specifically identified. I think a group kind of came out of Woodwork as a group after the last really big public meeting we had. And, and kind of started asking some questions and stuff like that. I'm confident that we can answer their questions and mitigate their concerns in the, in the big picture. I don't think that's any issue at all, so.
Okay, so direct by line, next week? Next is a special public records update. So we have Trish Holden and a few other people from the prosecutor's office.
I just got to enforcement.
Okay.
I have somebody from HR who just filed.
Looks like you're in charge of this discussion.
Well, I provided a rather complete packet for you, but I don't feel, I don't want to read through by any means. The first swat, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats lays out what I've been dealing with with public records, since you handed that off to me at the beginning of the year. I, I talked to Mark for about an hour. I visited with Jepco, C E P A, and what they do. Right now, what I see as the biggest challenge is our records management in various departments or lack thereof. I have Mark here, we met for an hour, and he is better at laying things out, believes there needs to be a full-time public records officer, or part-time staff.
I think the magnitude of undertaking likely warrants the work of a full-time person to be someone currently with the story that there could be someone to. But given the magnitude of the undertaking, which includes training as to not only all existing county offices, but also any county created boards or commissions. That in and of itself is significant undertaking. Because what I, what I believe the legislature, certainly the attorney general's office contemplate in relation to public records management, open public meetings, compliance, open government as a, as a whole concept. Is that agencies will take the lead in ensuring that all of their departments, their boards, their committees are aware of applicable laws. So for example, every time the board commissioners creates a county created board committee, that would probably be who has to have a formalized training requirement. Could be something fairly simple. If you look at how the governor's office interacts business, they, they ask that people who are appointed to boards or committees within, say, 90 days, complete certain. say, ninety days complete certain training modules that will help familiarize them with the, some of the nuance of the Open Public Meetings Act, so they can understand that their board committee may have to publish its meeting so that the public's aware, much like this board does, uh, are also aware of the existence of the Public Records Act, uh, the long, uh, long reach of its term, and then when it comes to records maintenance, uh, archive retention as well, I think some of the nuance of those requirements probably escapes many of our boards, committees, and probably frankly, a number of county offices. And so, if you look at the, the need to establish, I think organizational training on the level, that is just as important as compliance with, um, with regard to discrete processing of requests. Uh, most requests are fairly straightforward, that's always been the case, it's just, uh, people trying to get information from the county about a discrete topic, uh, one or more. Uh, some requests become far more convoluted and can become extraordinarily time consuming, uh, taking hours per days, uh, hours per day over the course of months. And so, uh, during my type of the organization, I think what we've done is, is maybe evolving our approach to the issue of, uh, open government compliance, both in relation to OTMA and in relation to the Public Records Act and archive retention management, that we think I need to do more, frankly. Uh, this is a, it's a state law that exists, it essentially presents, uh, strict liability to public separate entities if they get it wrong, especially with regard to the public records piece. And so, uh, Trish is doing a great job, but I have my, I have my doubts regarding whether and tactic this on to her edition of her current job description, um, is realistic with the amount of work that I think will be required. Uh, a lot of this will be very intensive communication going forward between all county departments, uh, whoever is the county's designated public records officer, can be likened to an exercise in part of tasks, given that the fairly big structure of county government, and so this is a situation where we really need to, to ramp up the communication that we're exploring, we're philosophizing more communication versus less, which I think is helpful, I would certainly encourage it to do so in relation to the, uh, public records compliance and such.
So I will add that we mandated or required the members of the chartering new commission to take the public records, um, training, records management training, and provide proof within sixty days or thirty days or whatever that they can have that. So we, we've actually trained at least one of our board employees in those things. I talked to, um, HR about including possibly the public rec, Open Public Meetings Act, public records, uh, and records management training as part of the annual county law training, and they are really supportive of that because of the, uh, huge risk of employees not knowing what records to keep, what records to, you know, put away, what to redact, what not to redact, and those kinds of things is, is a huge liability. I can tell you that the, uh, Jeffco requires all of their employees to have records management training and that the Open Records Act training, as does the City of Port Angeles. So these are two of the, uh, kind of police, now, which counties, where I've worked quite a lot with, one of their civil prosecution teams, which is how the limits was created was based on, you know, the current one, and their suggestions. Well, hanging proof, training, I think is, is one easy way to start, um, getting a public records specialist in each department and getting them trained.
And Trish, what, what would that training entail for a departmental-level public records specialist?
I think training in records management and the, um, Public Records Act, and those are pretty easy to get, I got, I brought it in with me, I've got a list of all the trainings that the, um, all the training that the Secretary of State offers, and they are free. There's some in Tom Water coming up, we offered some here on, uh, June first, unfortunately, not everyone was able to attend that.
So, conceivably, it would be like maybe a one day or a couple of days' worth of training, then maybe an annual update or something like that?
And Mark, it was a few years ago that we had the public records people designated in all the departments, and you did a kind of a two-hour basic training with those people. I think we could probably do an in-house thing again. The woman from Snohomish also comes and does a two-hour presentation that might be appropriate for a department head record official meeting, um, and higher levels, if it's a, or something like that, that's a little more intensive. What I see is, I guess a problem right now is a lot of staff doesn't really know what a public record is, or what a record is, and so sometimes we get requests for information that don't really fall under that act, uh, and then not knowing what records we have, I think it's a huge thing.
And I would echo that we, uh, that we do improve the organization to, again, not just look at, not just look at public records, uh, in relation to the processing of discrete requests, but we really need to, from a whole health perspective, look at everything that goes into that. We have, um, you know, we have storage facilities, uh, the basement of the county and rented facilities across the county containing many, many public records that are being maintained by departments. Some of those are being maintained, um, beyond destruction, uh, dates set by archive retention for good reason, others are being kept just for the visibility, it bothers to look through them. Uh, we really need to, to know what, what's in our possession, number one, because, uh, that's our obligation of the act, is, is conducting objective userless search, locating records, and introducing those through inspection or copying of requests. But, uh, I think what, where we've fallen down, in my, my opinion, uh, as an organization, is that while we at times have had discussions regarding the need for compliance, uh, at the top, as it were, I'm not sure that that message has been carried through in each individual county officer or department, uh, and certainly not in a sustained fashion. And so, some departments seem to take public records compliance more seriously, uh, my, my strong suspicion is that one department's concept of what is a reasonable search is much different than that existing in another department, and so trying to see if we can streamline things so we have more consistency would be very helpful, um, having some, some leadership from the top down, from board, uh, and within each office, from an elected down, from an appointed down, and have that, that consistent shepherd of the importance of this organization, I think is very important, because if we, if we fall short in connection with any discrete request, it doesn't matter, uh, the, the partner or office involved, ultimately, the liability that law attaches to the county. And so that's why I think we have a clear obligation to, to make sure we're doing everything we can in-house to, uh, to message this, to get buy-in and cooperation from electeds from various different ways, so that we can make sure that we're, we're turning out the same widget in this process essentially, which is kind of what the legislature contemplates.
I, at one point, an elected official department had me, and I gave something to June and asked if the department head elected officials could do an inventory at their office, because I was curious what records they had. I got one response back. So, part of what I see as a challenge, and Mark has said this as well, is getting everybody's buy-in in the county about how important this is and the liability that we suffer anybody, Trish, do you agree?
Right. Well, we need to affect a certain amount of cultural change, uh, within the organization, and, and, uh, you know, public records need to be at the forefront of our thinking and not the, not an afterthought. So, when, when I think about all the pieces of work that need to be done, uh, do, do you have this, I mean, there's, there's, what, what we talked about today, there's going through old records and, uh, cold records that no longer need to be kept, and perhaps, uh, you know, that are organizing the records that do exist, there's, there's ensuring that each department has someone identified and trained, the officials in department heads, there's policy change in ordinance, uh, you know, there's an electronic aspect of this. How would you suggest we prioritize the, the effort? Are there pieces of work that we can get started on, uh, before looking at updating the policy and ordinance, or do we really start with firming up the policy and ordinance and then following them?
Personally, I'd like to see the training get having on, as a county has a mandatory training for all staff, and if that's just a simple link to the Secretary of State's website, then that, that could happen, and I don't know how quickly that, or sure, you know, how long that would take to implement, which, that's a easy thing, that's, that would be a starting point. The Deputy Prosecuting Attorney at Snohomish did individualize records retention schedules for the departments based on states, and I kind of did a preliminary look at doing that. The City of Port Angeles, I'm backtracking here, hired somebody for two years as a records manager. The Jeffco also has a records management person, and essentially what they do is work with the individual departments on their retention, getting them to archive things that need to be transferred, getting stuff destroyed that needed to be, needs to be destroyed, determining what the permit, so, kind of orchestrating everything, but not necessarily doing the records for the individual departments. I know that HR and Public Works are looking at perhaps hiring a part-time staffer to go through their records, without somebody that really knows what that looks like, I'm not sure that that's the best thing. Um, we might want to look at that position, and I don't know if any of the auditors' money that she collects from recordings could be used for that, um, because I think that is designated for, um, records, the records maintenance or auditors' money?
Well, technically, records management, but...
Okay. So I don't know if any of that money, I, I believe each of the departments that I just mentioned were looking to use some of that money to pay the part-time help to do, to do their records. Um, I guess I'm suggesting it might be nice to get a person on there that could do that, and maybe it's just a one-time, one-year, two-year, City of Port Angeles is two years, Jeffco's full-time, that they've also had a person at Jeffco for as long as I think.
And speaking of the financial aspect of it, um, what, what can we reasonably do to, um, just as, as the public is charged of, you know, per copy fee or whatever, if we're producing the records in paper version, if we're working on a records request that requires, you know, twenty hours of staff time, or, or, uh, you know, of searching electronic records or whatnot, is there, uh, an established way for, uh, the, the county to be compensated for time used processing public records requests?
To some degree. So there is, there is an ability, if we were to formalize our approach as an agency to public records compliance, through which we can recapture, uh, resource expended, same performing customer search. Uh, you know, my comment right now is that I don't think we're at the point where we really have the, the foundation in place to articulate under state law the ability to do that, um, and frankly, we're not, we're not consistent at all in right how we're pushing that issue right now, it's just another, another shortcut, but, uh, there would be an ability to offset some costs for, um, for a limited range of functions, but the long-term short of it is that, I think that the way that the state legislature has approached public records is that it's, uh, as an agency obligation, it's one of the services that government is looked to provide, uh, and that's part of the exchange for taxpayer dollars, so we can, you know, we can charge a, a reasonable cost, uh, say, per page, maybe fifteen cents per se, for example, per page, or maybe twelve cents per page, that's designed to kind of defray the paper costs, the copying costs for a, for a discrete request, but many of these costs are, I think, designed more by a public agency, it doesn't matter if it's the state or the county or city, uh, what we can recoup is fairly limited in scope.
So the long-term point being the better organized we are, the less amount of staff time theoretically that will take to process?
Very much so. Yeah, we, we don't have a very efficient model right now, which is part of our problem.
It seems to me, as we've been talking about this and just working through it in the last number of months, that, that coordination piece that you're referring to is probably our biggest challenge, and, and, uh, so, maybe thinking about what we can do right off the bat to try and, and encourage everyone to be participatory in this process and on the same page, um, to, to me, that, that makes sense as a way to approach it, um, and, and, um, the, so there was a, a meeting called a few weeks ago, there was an elected, some department head meeting that was a training, that you said was another...
No, no, I, um, I've asked Jim a couple of times to bring stuff to the department head elected official about public records, and the last time was to get a records inventory, because I don't know which departments have what records, and so it's really hard to figure out how to help them manage that, or even for them to know what to ask them for if I get a public records request, it's like, okay, I think the assessor might have that record, but I don't know, because I don't know what records they have, for example. So that's why that, um, a records specialist in each department would be helpful, because I'm a good, I'm a specific person. When I asked for the inventory, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't comply with that.
The training component, though, you was telling me about, was the, we had a professional come over, offered to do a couple hours of the training, and we asked for each department to send send one person to that training, and most of them did, but there was two or three that didn't, were not able to, and it's, it's a particular problem for particularly our smaller departments, they, we do these things during the day, and they have to operate, and they have to stay open, and you'll control things if necessary, so it'd be, you know, it's, it's a problematic issue, and it's just one that we've been dealing with for several years, actually, prosecutor's office has, has made a recommendation to elevate a, a full-time person either in their office or in another department for several years, and, uh, it's just never risen to the level that the board, one of the comments we've always heard, well, we never, you know, we haven't been sued, we haven't lost any money, um, uh, let's keep working on it, let's try and, let's try and catch here, and we've done, I think we've done pretty darn well, but it's caused a tremendous burden on the prosecutor's office to be, to be that support for all these departments, and on a few occasions, as we've seen lately, uh, things have fallen through the cracks that, that we haven't done so well. So, I, I also agree, the time has come where, where it's, it's become, um, it's become somewhat of a, of a cottage industry for various people to, to look for opportunities to get money out of their old governments, by trying to meet more and more complex asks in order to force, uh, a, a failure, and they get their money, uh, or they can sue and, and it's, and it's just gotten to the point where it's kind of like outside hacking, uh, while you hope it never happens to you, the consequences of it, uh, of the, of the, of that failure, even when it does happen, are just too brave to ignore, it's just something we have to do, I think.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, this needs to be one of our top priorities, and, you know, going into, to budget season, I think we should be very prepared to, you know, address this. Trish, when you highlighted staff training as something that should begin immediately, are you thinking... are you thinking additional training for the identified records specialists in each department or more broad-based training?
I believe right now, while we're second, maybe we should have the training.
There's that module training that we have for other things.
Your defensive writing.
If we can figure out who is...
Right, right. Is that, you know, is that something that we can, does that exist already? Can we just add that module?
I think we can, I think we can supplement what we have now, based on the training that was put on on June 1st. And I think that can be, that can be folded into that. I don't see a problem with the with the application of the training. There's some technical things to make happen, but I don't see that as an issue.
And then for the records specialist, you'll need to find your time and either have state archives come back or have Sarah the inventoryist, the person at Snohomish, they let her out. She did my training in May and I was quite impressed. She travels around and does that. So we could get her for a couple of hours. I don't know if she charges for that, do you know?
I don't know.
Is that anything you would want to take on?
So the...
It would be more specialized, more specialized records management, public records training for the designated public records specialists in each of the departments.
So we, I would note at the outset that this this function is an agency function. You won't find anything in the state constitution, you won't find anything in Title 36, you won't find anything in 4252 that speaks to this being a prosecutor function to oversee organizational compliance. We have always done everything within our power to help the organization comply. But frankly, it comes at a cost and expense usually of, you know, a significant percentage chunk of civil division. And so just recently, my now-departed uncle, so, you know, she shared with me that she'd spent four to five hours per day for several months just working on public records compliance, assisting other county departments. And so what we see happening is that either because a department is dealing with a very complex request, or because a department just doesn't know what to do, they tend to send it to legal. And so the organization, and past prosecutors, have just kind of allowed for that to happen. The problem from my perspective is that it pulls a civil vision, often its primary function of providing day-to-day operational advice for county departments, which is really what we're here for, paying an attorney at a higher level to perform what could be done by someone in a lesser way of compensation, everything's better said. Again, especially if this results in us needing to build in wait times and get into other legitimate requests that are, you know, I think, organizationally significant. So we'll help, but I'm not willing to assume, I'm not willing to assume the function on behalf of the organization.
So it sounds like there's something that we can reasonably do in the short term to start addressing broad staff training. If I heard correctly, there were several smaller department heads that weren't able to either attend or identify a public records specialist from within their department. Perhaps we can do some individual outreach to those departments, since it's tough for them to come to a meeting. And I'm trying to think about what what is going to be a good working group to look at the policy 320, look at the ordinance, and sort of work through that so they can come, you know. What I would love to see is to have that broad group work through these pieces and then come to board with, you know, with a recommended update to the policy and a recommended ordinance. I know perhaps it's something we can discuss, discuss in a work session. But if we can use that more broad-based group to help produce the document, that might lead to, you know, it'll help us start to think more organizationally and theoretically might might inspire buy-in more broadly. Does that sound like a like a reasonable step? Is that too large for the group to work through some of this?
The ordinance was a suggestion for not a training so that you have a force of law behind you. I think it would probably perhaps dictate how the policy changes in some ways. And that's the cart and horse thing.
I think there's even a fruit or cart and horse thing. Mark mentioned at the start of this that that one of the things he was concerned about was that just dumping this new responsibility, which is a decision we made during the budgeting process, to try and do on top of Trish in our current work book. The idea was to take advantage of a differing skill level in our staff. A person that we used to have, using, you know, a fully-trained clerk, to to transition those duties away from Trish into her hands, to give her more time to work on this, and then see where we needed to go. Did we need to make a full-time position? My judgment, Trish, Trish has the necessary skills and temperament to to be in charge of the entire county's records management and public records act compliance, as Mark talked about. We don't need an attorney-level person, but we need, we need somebody with a bulldog-type of approach and an ability to accept the training and be able to give the training and essentially not take over and answer, right? Trish has those skills. And and so we were delayed in making the transition, this transition, because we lost the staff and now we've been training on it. And she's picking up things very quickly and and working well. And so this is what's allowed Trish to spend that more time. But I always believed, and what we talked about last year, is that at some point, we're probably going to, we're probably going to need to expand it to a full-time position, probably in next year's budget process. So I'm anticipating Trish will be spending a lot more time on this. We can do the the low-hanging fruit things we talked about, the the full training, we can get some specialized training, as you mentioned, to to the departments that weren't able to, I mean, specific training, who weren't able to come. And at the point that we, the point where we're going to need more staff, either more Trish's time or hire some part-time folks, potentially in the, out of whatever sources we prioritize the interim, maybe some of the income help from the auditor's records money, is when we actually start implementing not the training, but start implementing a systematic approach to destruction and records management compliant with the law. And we just have to get rid of the pack rat that's in a lot of us and say, it's time to get rid of this stuff. Because as we've seen lately, having things, while it's handy to go back, and I can tell you, I'm one of the worst ones, I have every email that I've ever received in the 10 years I've been here, even though I only need to keep them for three years, because just every once in a while, it's handy to go back and find something you dealt with six or seven years ago. It brings with it, though, the potential for liability, not so much in the handing out of the information, but in failing to provide it when you have it, when somebody asks. And it becomes a huge burden on IT right now. They're, you know, they're running terabytes of information just on on electronic data that we no longer need to keep, and it makes the search much more harder. So at that, at the point we actually decide to jump in and start really managing to to these state archival and required records, I think we need to add staff at that time, whether it's more Trish's time or some part-time people spread throughout the organization. And so then we have to prioritize it as Trish's time, somebody to come in and backfill all those things that she does for admissions.
Jimmy, your electronic just triggered that, too. That's another huge gap is our electronic file management. I know there are folders on different departments from employees who haven't worked here for six, seven, eight years, that they have to work in these folders. And they're still on the system. You got it, you got it, explosive. We need to somehow figure out a way to pull that out, too.
And to me, the easiest way to do that...
So again, specific training on electronic, on electronic files.
The easiest way to do that is to take my archive specialist information that we need to have from the state, saying, there is no reason to keep an electronic record, this kind of record, more than three years, email, ordinances, whatever that time is, contracts, whatever that time is, and just go through with a meat sweeper and say, I don't care how handy it is, give it. And that gets rid of those folders, it gets rid of, because somebody, we don't have the ability to take the time to go through these literally millions of electronic records, literally, and say, this one's good, that one's bad.
Some of that is, and I hope I'm using the right word here, transitory. So people work on drafts in their folders all the time, and once your contract is a contract and it's signed by the board, the other record is no longer necessary. You've got the paper, you've got the executed, and all the drafts are just that.
Of your city right then.
Exactly.
Because we don't have the time, nobody has the time individually to go through and say, this is no longer needed, we have a permanent record here. Again, your time, somebody's time in each department, nobody in IT, they just don't really, it's an incredible administrative burden.
The bigger problem, too, is when I get a request, and I had one that produced like 10,000 documents that I had to read through to find out what applies and what doesn't apply, is that all of the departments have user directories, and almost all of the people in those departments do their work in their user directories. So if I have a public records request for something that may be a DCD, then DCD has to search through all of those user directories to see if there's anything relevant, which would lead me to this enterprise contract content management type of program that records suggest. I don't know if it would help with that or not, but it just seems like there's a huge undertaking here that has to happen, and some stuff in IT as well, about how we structure the folders in our offices and how people use them. There's just...
And the content management, we looked at this for a couple of years, too. It's fairly expensive to start that process, seven figures, to to get a full-time content management program going, like Laserfish, the city of Port Angeles has got money. And part of that is the software, part of that's the hardware, but most of it is the standing of all records into it. Once you're, once you're moving along and you've got it up and running, the records go into it automatically as you as you create them. But we've got millions of that records that would have to get somehow into the system and into the system in the right, the proper format that, in my judgment, until we downsize those legally, it doesn't make any sense to to pay the money to start the, or to get the enterprise up and running. We could buy it and start it, and from some defined point forward, always put things into it and and run two different systems. Yes, again, that takes a little bit extra management, a little bit extra time. Unfortunately, again, the smaller departments, we have, we have, over the last several years, basically since 2009, we have systematically, because revenues don't keep up with expenditures, we have systematically downsized as people have left everywhere we could, any redundant people and backup people. And so we don't have people just sitting around that could take on these extra projects, really, and it's really bad in this whole department. We just don't, they're barely keeping up with, you know, meeting the people, meeting the public and meeting the pressing needs, and that's part of the problem, and this isn't unique to us, that's part of the problem statewide. We talk about this all the time at the administrators' conferences.
There are four different companies, and that's in your materials, that are approved by the state Secretary of State's office. They, there is a ECM training, there's one in September, and there's something called Vendor Fair. It would be great if somebody from our IT department could could attend those.
Along with you, if you're still in records management.
Laserfish seems to be the soupe du jour, because there are three other companies. I think Laserfish was just on the bandwagon first, so a lot of people have it, a lot of people use it, a lot of people like it, some people don't. But IT really would be the one to evaluate what would be the best system and look at perhaps migrating in a way that that makes sense. I know the Sheriff's Department scans all of their contracts, so if they don't, I don't, you don't keep any originals, do you?
We do.
You keep the original.
You keep the original.
But they also scan them. One of the things the city uses, Laserfish for, is they scan all their contracts and then they're online.
And then they destroy the original.
Well, they, I think they, the city manager's office keeps all the contracts, and they just keep a paper copy. She said she can't control, other departments seem to want copies of things, and she can't control that. They keep one there, but the rest of it is scanned and put on this Laserfish, and they have a link on their website, so if somebody on the outside wants to see a contract, and I've gotten requests for that center contract, you know, hearing examiner contracts, I'd give a request for contract, people could just go online and get a contract. And so there are some advantages, but IT's really going to have to be the one that evaluates whether we want to go down that road and which might be the best program for us. I printed out, I selected in the office, I printed out some information, uh, from Laserfish that isn't selling the product, it's just talking about what content management deals, and also the trainings that the Secretary of State offers about that particular use.
By the way, I need to correct something. Yes, it's seven figures, it's six figures. It's not a million dollars. It's a multiple hundred thousand.
The treasurer's here, I don't know if she has anything to show us.
Oh, I have one other...
Hang on, I think that's the treasurer, if she has anything.
I'm listening.
You have enough of that?
I have nothing there at this point. I told, somebody else asked for this a while back, and then it just triggered it again. Resolution from 1996 that created the Information and Office Technology Advisor Review, which we call IOTAC, that worked with Central Services Director, Director, and evaluated and, evaluating and prioritizing Palm County Information Office Technology. So they've had a representative of each of the departments that met with IT to kind of talk about the broad ways that it works with county departments, and I don't know if there are any, some people are looking at doing something like that again.
And what year was it?
Especially 96.
1996.
And it was operational when I started in 99.
We had it all the way through the mid, I don't know, by the...
I don't know when they stopped doing that.
Yeah. I remember it was almost, it wasn't going when I got here, and I think it stopped before 18.
Did you participate, or...
No, but we, but I remember we played numbers and the full-blown committee.
Yeah. So they worked with the Director in prioritizing projects and...
Bring, bring most of Daniel O'Burson and Dave Meyer, and they kind of worked together.
That might be another thing to look at in terms of evaluating software and what the needs of the various departments. Maybe, most of what I work with is permanent records, so it's always scanned, but it's not, a citizen wants a resolution or an ordinance, one, they can click on the code and get the other ones, that's an easy one, but it's a little convoluted. And two, the resolutions are not available to the public, and that's again something that the city of Port Angeles says on the website. So if a citizen wants a resolution, I'm scanned back to 75, they can get right off there and not bother. And then possible, and I'm handling public records requests, I have blood links. It's the easiest thing to do.
Well, I have some experience with this from private industry, and also a company that bought other companies, so we inherited their records. The thing that we found most often was you have to give the department head the ability to say yes or no to report a document. You know, you've got your guidelines, but it could be something that's very critical, and you rely on the department head's judgment for that. But also, what we found was we had to support the department heads. had to support the department heads. And once they have the most backlog, they haven't been touched, they'll always glance over physics. If they're getting out there and they're making things happen, it's a little priority. So, the way we got around it was to form kind of us, what you're talking about, individuals in departments, a squad team. And then, you get rid of, how come you're so far behind is the reason for our conversation with the department head, enter into a different discussion than is, you know, we had to schedule it in three months to go and dispose certain documents and help with that. What is what we could do to prepare for that event? And that changed an awful lot. And then on the electronic, it was a little bit mean, but it worked. We asked everybody to place everything in folders that were dated. And so, your folder could have all kinds of different Excel or Word or whatever documents, but anything you did that calendar year went into that folder, gave everybody a timeframe, and anything that wasn't in a folder ended up on a hard brick. If you really truly needed it, you wanted to come over the weekend and spend time with the IT guys, maybe you'd get it in an hour or two. But that, they helped divide this wall, you know, helped us say, okay, at this point in time, where's everything? And we're going to put it here. It's not going to be lost, but we're going to put it here. It's not going to be easy to get to.
So, Bill, what would you like to see us do so that we can create that kind of support and that kind of impetus organizationally to, to get there?
I think if we had a chance to listen to the electeds in the departments, you'd ask the question, what we'd like to do is provide support for you, and we're going to gear up for the budgeting process, and if this helps, we'll also put, and then probably like to roll out, I think, all the departments can actually weigh in a little bit, or the department banks out there, or their hopes. But being able to listen, I've been all in next meeting, you have chairman of the department heads and the electeds.
Next, not this one, but a week.
So, that would be a starting point, right? Have a supportive note for that, listen to them, and see what they have to say.
Can you put that on your agenda?
Sure.
Which one do you want to attend, or do you want to make a public meeting? Two of you attend, has to be noticed as a public meeting, or you attend as a...
If, I don't know my calendar, but I would definitely like to attend.
Yeah, probably, I need to go outside with the parents.
So, that's... I, I think anything that we can do to underscore the importance, you know, of what we're doing, and I think that, that, you know, us being here might help to do that. Chris, is there information, if, if we're going to, going to do this in a couple of weeks, is there information that we would want to get out to or communications that we would want to have with individual departments ahead of time so that, so that everyone's prepared?
It would be helpful if they could determine who they want their public records specialists to be, and perhaps have them attend that meeting.
Okay.
It seems like you don't have this ordinance in front of them ahead of time, so they can overlook that.
I, no, it's just a draft, it was just kind of what you said. The training I went to suggested that, you know, public records, information, policy, whatever, be an ordinance that falls under law, rather than a policy, because I can tell you, I get calls all the time, people asking me, you've got to start with all of the policy, and it's like, have you read policy?
So, if we do this at the department head elected official meeting, at some point it was decided only exempt people could attend, and some of the specialists in the various departments might help exempt people, there might be unions, so want to address that at all?
On this one, I think you...
Do you want to call the department head elected official, or do you want to call it a special meeting?
You're welcome, because we don't have the same problem.
We do a public meeting, okay.
Let's do a special, show off anybody can...
And I mean, what do we call it, a special public meeting?
Sure, to deal with, just like we did last week with yesterday, you're ready, last one.
Kneel down specifically what you want on that agenda, because that's all we can talk about.
Right, exactly. We can do that. We'll do a special meeting on records management.
To me, underscoring the importance of what we're talking about, I'll maybe highlighting some of the cities and counties that have recently interrupted, you know, because they don't have the systems in place. And then, you know, I like your suggestion, Bill, taking the standpoint that we need to hear from you, what, what kind of support you need so that we can figure out how to provide it. I think that's an important message. And I, you know, I, I really do like the idea, and I don't know if it will ultimately be that group or a subset of that group, but using that conversation as an opportunity at least to start looking at our policy and ordinance, and I would, I would really see some sort of a group, a broad-based group, come together to look at those specifically, so that they could come back to, you know, come back to us at a work session with a, you know, a recommended draft, I guess, or, so that sounds like a pretty tall agenda.
Then we're good, because after we've had a chance to talk about it, not only just the theoretical, but here's the box, and so, we're going to tear into this box, here's the example of what we're doing, and what people are going to get a better position to say, you know what, you guys, you're dreaming, what's required of manpower, either we need to change manpower, or we need to change hurdles, but we'll get the feedback for that.
And I think too, that's, you know, it certainly is logical and timely to think about whatever changes we make, wrapping them into the budgeting process and whatnot, but I would think that if, over the next couple of weeks or months, if we determine, particularly based on feedback from our department heads, that there's a need for additional resource now, then I, you know, I want to go back, so that we can figure out how to handle it, so.
I think that's a great first step. Second step, I mean, the first step is to make the, and the commitment to make mandatory training every year, people go through the modules, so that it gets rush of their money. Second, third, fourth time of the year, come second meeting.
And the specialists would receive a little extra, or more intensive kind of training?
Absolutely. And if, if there are folks who are not able to attend this meeting due to staffing limitations or whatnot, then, you know, we need to practically reach out and have, you know, have that same conversation with them at another time.
I keep triggering things. The training on, on June 21st, I put the PowerPoint and the recording up on our website and sent all the employees a link, so that the ones that weren't able to attend.
May 21st.
Interested?
May 21st.
June 1st was when our, you know, was when our records management training was... Anyway, I put the PowerPoint from that and the IOT on our website. I also made a note here that email, what I understand is, there is a way, with proper training, if somebody deletes an email, it should get deleted from our IT, from our server. And I don't know that that currently happens.
Certainly does not happen right now.
So, for example, I invited them out, we had two press, two press releases from the Sheriff's Department. I don't know who all got that, but it created a public record to the people that received it, and it created a public record for the people that sent it. So, say 20 people got it, those 40 public records, plus there's a PDF that is attached. No retention value whatsoever. I should be able to just delete it.
Should you go through it?
And they reached out to us with the department, but I should be able to delete it, and it should go away on the server as well.
Are the subjects related to the IT aspect of this sufficiently different and/or sufficiently we need, that we need to take a different approach working with IT or some additional effort?
That's what I suggested, that perhaps that IOTAC might be worth looking at again.
IT's got a, a unique function, support function for this. I mean, they don't create their own records almost at all, but they have a unique support function that, that, you know, when they go to their IT conferences, people talk all the time about being sued and how IT has to do the search. And most of the frequent flyer, they get records or, or looking to, they really don't want a record, they just want to, so to say, in the gears, there's a few of those folks out there, luckily, we haven't run into many, is, is that IT, there is no cost under the law, under the state law, that you're allowed to, you're allowed to charge a 15 cents, up to 15 cents a page, per page, paper copy, and no cost for any of your time for delivering it. Or, you're allowed to choose the actual cost of delivery. So, in IT, how do we determine the actual cost? If you give it to them on a, on a CD, yep, yep, we can charge them about 50 for the CD. If you just send it to them by email, we can't determine there is an actual cost. You can, we have a per-scan cost of .009, less than one cent per scanning. If we have to scan something, we can charge actual, so IT can't, we cannot charge us for any of their time in accumulating the records. So, they basically just keep everything into wholly in search. If you ask for the word column, and all records that have the word column, and literally, they're going to have millions of records that are to be applied. And so, it's a, IT's, doesn't want to spend the time to look at things, so they give you these bulk, it's the only way they can really deal with it.
Right. Well, I guess that's what I'm, what I'm getting at, is, you know, if, if the records management professionals are suggesting a significantly different course of action than what we've currently been doing, you know, I don't want to just, you know, tell Deborah, you're going to do it differently starting tomorrow, you know, that, that doesn't work. You know, but I would like to, you know, it seems to me that their, their support function in this is so broad and so ubiquitous and challenging, you know, that, that, that we need to work specifically with the IT department in addition to, you know, in addition to the process that we're engaging with, with the rest of the organization. And if that, if trying to put that committee back together is the right first step.
I don't know.
Well, my experience, I have with IT assisting, and the problem is for IT to give lessons on how to build folders and email. And it's amazing, a lot of people don't do that. But once you start doing that, then IT can do some things such as, if it's not moved over by the end of year, it disappears. And that's what they would do is, like, for my email, you know, I've had some folders. And then, if I pop it open, I review it, you know, if I need to take action, I do. If I want to retain it, then I'll toss it into something better, it'll be cool, whatever it is. But all the rest of those, I don't care if they destroy it in 60 days. And that's the system that I was used to, is important enough to pull it out, toss it in a folder, and then periodically, you let IT decide. If it was either a temporary folder, like for six months, or it's literally destroyed right then and there. The key was for us to learn, especially people like me that didn't have that expertise, how to move files, you know, and even how to move an Excel file into a...
Right.
And then, that's a role IT can play.
But, you know, in the Logan, we've got this room, would be, when you get an email that says, come to IOT's retirement party, and you delete it.
It goes away.
It goes away, it's off the server, it doesn't, it isn't that important. But, again, when that got sent to county employees, we created 800 public records. I can tell you on the search that, that I did that produced, you know, probably 10,000, probably 30% were newsletters. And it's, it's just really frustrating. It's frustrating for them, I think it took Jane two days to do that search, to get me the information, and it's probably taken me over a week to read through some of this stuff, and I'm still working on it. Because I, you do so much.
Right.
But that, you know, that would be a simple thing, is if, if you look at it, you read it, you don't need it, and you delete it, then it goes away. Sarah used the example, she said they have a frequent flyer, and she said, let's just call her Jane, so I don't know what Jane's name is. But right before she came to her training, Jane asked for all the email that she had sent and received for the past year. She said fortunately, because they have this system, she only had to read through about 1,000 records instead of 4,000 records. And so, there's definitely some efficiencies there, being able to, people are properly trained, and they delete it from your email, and they have it set for seven days, I think she said. So, you, you know, two days after you deleted something, you think, oh, I don't really want it that, and it's like, yeah.
Well, maybe it's, maybe it's enough for right now, since the, the theme of this meeting was going to be, let us know what sort of support you need, so that you can do this properly, maybe then that, we can wait for the opportunity to hear back from IT, what, what that is, and if that works, separate conversation.
And I'll ask Debbie to, to make sure that she's ready to at least offer some, participate in some meaningful way at the elected official meeting. She should be able to be ready for that.
Jess attended the records training, she's there, and this person's down there. Great help with was there, and I think Jane and Wise may have attended for a portion of it, so like three people have a right to make a turn in the last week.
It's a big deal for them, they've spent a lot of time supporting our rights.
Well, I mean, the reality is, we're already spending a huge amount of resource, you know, doing this, and it makes great sense to figure out, if there's any way we can do it more efficiently.
Any comments, any questions from the audience? Thank you for working with us.
I was unable to attend the meeting because it was on the first of the month, but I did listen to the tape, and that might be something that you would give a heads up to the people coming to the department head meeting, that they might want to try to listen to that before they come. There was a lot of good information on it.
Cool. Maybe we can do a quick invite. Anybody else?
On you and PowerPoint, yes?
Just that I like the idea of perhaps restarting a committee that was in the past, looking at projects that have to do with the computer technology. I mean, I certainly have some issues that I would like to address for financial security, and I think it would be good to have a committee that involves other departments and... So, I, I just, I think plug to that, restarting a committee like that would be helpful.
I really do think that probably not, there's no real reason why I ended, I can't remember. Probably the only one, if you were here, I was here, but I don't really remember. But I think it kind of, honestly, I think it kind of ended when Mr. Engelbertson became the county administrator, he and Dave Meyer, who's head of IT, were so, they had worked on this IOTAC, and they just kind of kept it going, but it just kind of rolled into the administrator's office. Obviously, things have changed, IT directors have changed, so probably be a great idea to kind of pull the paperwork, see what it'll look like, and reconstitute it, and, 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 yeah. If, if the folks who remember Dan was, he was a real tech guru, he and Dave Meyer ran IT, had a real, really close working relationship, and so maybe Dan comes into the sheriff's office and started IOTAC, and coordinated all that, but when he became the administrator, I think he and Dave just kind of continued. And they kept a meeting, I know they happened, I don't know, I think kind of when he left, it just kind of fell apart, so.
Definitely don't remember. I just remember it was, it was going when I started, so.
Do you remember if the chair hosted?
Well, I, I think Dave did, but, you know, but yeah, I think you're right, and this is a good opportunity, this would be a, a great time to, to start, restart this, as part of this conversation, as part of some of your concerns that you've raised over the years with the whole continuity government issue, which is what this ties into as well.
Yes, there will also be a little more and more of the banking issues, security issues, data information back and forth on the daily basis, public fund safety.
So, your participation, I mean, I'd prefer, I'd, so it would probably be one of our first steps, by the way, is research that, and figure out how to pull that together, roll that out at the next week's meeting, and the department head, make sure that the folks are comfortable with that. week's meeting at the department head, make sure the folks are comfortable with that process. And it would be, so maybe we can get that up and running in a couple of weeks.
Yes, I would really appreciate that. Reconstitute IOTAP given the department.
Yeah, I would take it there, make sure there's concurrence, make sure there's concurrence and there's concurrence to get that committee going. And then we can bring it back the next week for the board. Dave, Ida's got 10 days left, so she's going to, I just know she really thinks.
Actually, the fourth Thursday of the month is elected official department meeting, which is basically the same.
Yeah, but we postponed it a week because we had too many things on the calendar. Do you want to chair the committee for your last 10 days?
No, just don't interfere with my determent.
That's right. What time is that, that's that?
Post 3.
3, so you guys have, you guys have to start at 1 and be done by 3, and then you'll have everybody right there to roll right into the party hours, so, yeah. Okay. Anything else on this?
This shows how long I've been a county employee, because I was on the IOTAP meeting. And the sheriff will probably appoint me to that as well, but now. But I remember it was very beneficial because it allowed each department that participated a voice to the IT director. And so it wasn't just something that you, that we've got once a year during the SRF process about, or you have to find time to get to them about a specific issue when they're busy. So you had a voice, each department had a voice and scheduled time at which you could voice your concerns. And you also learned a lot about what else was going on in the county. So you recognized that your project maybe wasn't given as much priority because there was something going on in the treasurer's office perhaps.
It used to actually, your projects used to actually have to be approved by the committee before they made it into the budget, if I remember right. You guys kind of come together, prioritize projects, and that's how, and you're right, people would then learn, oh, my issues, no, you know, boy, this one's a lot bigger, let's all support that for the next year.
Yeah.
Yeah. It brought the whole team back together on IT issues.
Yeah, it was very beneficial.
Remember why we ended it? I don't remember. I think just with Dan shifting and Dave retired, Jim was here, and I think they just kind of got lost a little bit.
Yeah.
Did you have it with Dan? Do you remember Dan Flynn?
You know?
Who was under Dave Meyer.
It was under Dave Meyer, but I think, I think when Dave retired and Dan was kind of retired, I mean, it was kind of, so, so you're early leader for early chair. Well, I'm going to use the first chair, the convening chair, to bring the team back together. There was a lot of benefit to it and just one of those things that kind of got dropped and lost and shuffled over the years, but. Okay. Thank you very much.
Very, very helpful.
I need to finish this to come forward. General discussion, looks like a couple of things are being scheduled for the next couple of weeks. Anything else you'd really wish to add? I guess we'll end this now, though. Yeah, summarize this activity, which is IOTAP, records, public records.
You can probably remove the Off River Reservoir off for now, then there's, I'll let you guys go if there's news, but there's not a whole, a lot going on. But I would ask you to be able to update you on the next couple of weeks.
Maybe next number updated, for the session, some of your presentation. Well, also, I had a request from our representative to the EDC, Larry Hewitt. He had asked if it would be possible to schedule individual meetings with each of you as our rep to, to help inform him on, you know, what he should be looking for or asking for with the, with the EDC. And so I said I would, I would talk and see who, and that each of you kept their own schedule with the help of the clerk as far as making those individual meetings. So, and I have caution about a serial meeting, what the things you got to worry about, so. Just in, I recommend that he maybe just meet, Mark's been kind of the lead on the EDC, I think I recommend he meet with Mark, someone who's first. I don't know that I, I don't know that I'd opt for encouraging him to meet serially on this issue. There's a lot of public scrutiny and all. So. I caution you about, yeah, worry for serial meeting. So maybe he meets with you and then if there's some issues or questions and need to come back to the board, you can just know the fact that, and you guys can formulate those questions together, you know, if he needs some specific direction, I'd really-
I think that sounds like a really helpful on this kind of initiative.
Since he is our representative, I think there are questions that you and he agree need, need to come back to the board, the guys bring it back. We never cleared, you know, we have a clear lead on EDC and there is, so, I mean, obviously it doesn't preclude us or anything, but I think we schedule it.
It makes me wonder why we just talked about it.
Right, right.
So.
Talk to them.
We've got people who are the same thing.
That's exactly true. So you can talk to them and kind of figure out maybe what issues to bring forward to public meetings.
And you know, some feedback there last Sunday, he was saying he spoke to projects, spoken, shared, it was confidential, sure, couldn't expand on it. And I'm not sure whether that's positive or negative.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of question, there's a lot of question about that.
I'm kind of wondering if he's better off just speaking to things he knows, kind of spoke to.
I think you can also talk publicly like I'm, you know, we are talking to a hotel who wants to move here, and they're going to bring 85 jobs, and here's what we need from the commissioners, or here's what we need from the county. You don't have to say whether it's a married, out, or ill, or whatever, it just, I think, I think that they cannot continue to hide behind it. Doing all this stuff, but we're not going to tell anybody what we're doing with public dollars. If they have private dollars, 100%, they can, they can do whatever they want. But the kind of public financing they're getting, they have, they have to share with the public, with who they're talking to.
Well, we've had pretty politically broad-based commentary at public meetings this year, with questions along those lines, so we definitely should be paying attention.
I understand that maybe there are times you can't specifically state a company's need, but I would sure like to know, are you talking to a hotel, are you talking to restaurants, are you talking to shipbuilders? I mean, what kind of businesses are you reaching out to, to bring to this area? And what can you do to help you make the best case for proper accounting of that? And that's what I'd remember, avoid any kind of serial meetings.
That's right.
So maybe you have Larry's number?
I do.
And I have his number. I'd see Larry call Mark and set something up. Sounds fun. And see if you can express the words concern of this idea of secrecy, because I'm hearing about it everywhere you go, around the county. The real level of frustration of money would provide, that we can't get the information of what's happening.
You got it.
Anything else?
I would mind a, a quick update. I don't know if you have one, or just about the, the Trustline Advisory Committee and the vote that they took on Friday and what the future of that committee is.
Bill will do that tomorrow.
Oh, you are? Okay, sure.
Great, you're going to report tomorrow.
Okay.
But Jim already called you right after the vote, and it's been some time, I think, so, you know, good information to share.
Great, I'll- Someone can give us that meeting, right?
And we recorded, Mike.
Right, I expect, can the board start getting copies of those minutes? When they're done?
If they're recorded and they're on a J drive, you won't need it, just-
No, if somebody's keeping, if somebody keeping written minutes.
Yes, they actually have, they have.
So as soon as mine hits those, or she could just email the board. So that's what they kept? Just on the website, you don't have a one?
You go to boards and committees, and then you click on the Trustline Advisory Committees, their agendas, their meetings, all of that.
Why do you make it so easy?
Anything else? So tomorrow, I think it's session at 11. Did you say this to remind everyone?
Yes.
So, we're meeting at 10, I think it's session at 11, Public Health, 11:30, so that ends today's meeting. And we'll reconvene tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. There's no objection, so we're good.